Welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting, October 3, 2024. We start every meeting with a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in silent prayer. Amen. I make, oh, I ask everybody to, did I introduce ourselves on the dais? Let's start.
Chrissy Raisel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
There's no cards, so there's no public comments. We'll go to the Board of Commissioners, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. We have a couple of things today. Couple of things that I did in representation of the Board. The first one is the UC Emergency Preparedness and Response Center. All three of us had an opportunity to tour this facility up at UC, and it is kind of in response to what we experienced during COVID, where we recognized that we needed facilities that could respond to a pandemic or some kind of disaster that happened in our community. And so UC has taken that seriously and built out this facility. It's really fantastic. It's got all the new technology. And they do a nice job of responding to the most dire situations in our community to begin with. And now they've got a facility that will help them do that work even better. So congratulations to the folks at UC and all the partners that joined for that opening this week. I also went on a Conservation District tour. Some of my staff went as well. And the tour was meant to show us some of the things that are happening in the community related to conservation, becoming more green, more sustainable. And so I only made it to a couple of stops. One was at Wyoming School, where they have projects to encourage kids to think about how they can lower their footprint there, and their carbon footprint in the community. And so it was exciting to know that the students are involved in that, and there's a judging of their projects. And sometimes they can scale these projects and make them larger. But it was a fun thing to do. And then we went out to Gorman Heritage Farm to better understand what they're doing out there with the green space that they have in land conservation. So thank you to the Conservation District for hosting that tour. Now, I attended the Talbert Lunch, which was great. It always is. Congratulations to Talbert, one more year. They did recognize Neil Tillo this year, who was the Director of Talbert for, I think it was 30 years, maybe more. But, you know, I'd like to say about Talbert, they were doing the work for people in addiction before anybody else was. And I congratulate them on their longevity and thank them for their dedication in that space. Also, just got back from a ribbon cutting at Thatcher Flats up in Walnut Hills. This is one of the projects that our ARPA dollars went to. And it is an affordable housing project, 50, 60 units up in Walnut Hills, named for a long-standing family in Walnut Hills. And so I was excited to see how our dollars are, you know, impacting some of what we have advocated for, which is affordable housing in Hamilton County. And then lastly, I wanted to bring something up a little bit, not so much related to county, but related to the region. So Reggie Harris has retired from City Council. I congratulate him. He's going to HUD. He will be a huge asset to them. He's got a fantastic housing background. But we will miss him as a partner. He was a City Council member. Maybe he still is a City Council member now I think about it. But regardless, he's leaving. And I just wanted to publicly thank him for his partnership and his dedication and hard work on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a few things. Let's see. I had the White House webinar again, and we'll have it again this evening, or this afternoon, I should say. I'm thinking about a meeting already. The Talbert House Annual Luncheon, I did attend. And also, Commissioner Treehouse, you were also recognized. The first award they gave out for Pat Tribby, and so congratulations on that. And I also had an Economic Development Update with Holly during the week. And just want to bring to the attention of those that are watching that Domestic Violence Month is this month. There will be a proclamation coming forth on October the 10th to recognize that. And also Hispanic Heritage Month, which we will provide recognition on October the 10th. In addition to that, I would like to draw special attention to what I know Jeff is going to talk about, Item 1 on the regular agenda as it relates to the Regional Safety Complex that will be coming up. The last time they said they couldn't hear me. That will be, he'll be talking more about and give an intro on that. But it's just, I'll talk more as we move toward Item 1, because I know we all want to make some comments about the regional gun range, okay? Thanks.
Yeah, I want to also join in congratulating UC Health. As indicated earlier, we got a chance to get a sneak peek at the Emergency Preparedness Response Center. One of a kind, I believe, in the state and in the region. But I also want to acknowledge their Blood Center that they have for cancer. And it is groundbreaking as well. With that being said, I'm excited. I've been talking about this cancer-style potential caucus. We will have the State of Cancer in Hamilton County. Those numbers have gone up. And we'll have a 513 Relief Day in conjunction with that at the Urban League. And that's going to be October 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we'll have a partnership with UC Health with the mammography. I think we have 20 slots available for mammograms. And...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Dumas says, hey, quiet in the rafter. But anyway, they will be having a mammography. So we have 20 slots available. People can, people can go to 513relief.org to sign up right away. And I'm looking forward to that. That's October 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., I mean, 3:00 p.m. rather, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The forum will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Urban League Holloman Center for Social Justice. And then we will move to the parking lot across the street from the Urban League, where we will have the mammography bus, 513 Relief bus, several free services, including prostate cancer screening. They have a new screening, gentlemen, that they could do from your, I believe, your finger now. So you don't have to fear anymore. They have this new testing style. And they'll be doing it at no cost on our 513 Relief bus. So very proud of that. We've been doing a number of medical screenings without the copay, no copay. And I think that's a big deal in our community, so for our county. So anyway, everyone is welcome. That's the location. But anybody that lives in Hamilton County, is a Hamilton County resident, can access these services at no cost. So wanted to highlight that. And then today, I also was at the opening of Thatcher Flats, formerly known as Lincoln and Gilbert in Walnut Hills. Got a chance to speak on behalf of the Board. We've invested $648,718 in that particular project. $40 million we've put toward affordable housing, the largest allotment in government history. We still have a ways to go, but these dollars are getting out the door, and projects are coming out the ground, and they are opening. So we're very pleased with that. Also was at the Talbert House Luncheon. And congratulations again, of course, to Neil Tillo, but also Catherine Gardett. We know all the hard work she's done. And Nehemiah Manufacturing, a second chance program that actually really works. So I want to just give them a big, they're connecting people with jobs and hope and opportunities. So we're very, very proud of them and the work they're doing as well. Got a chance to meet with Irish Bush and CEO and President Doug Oberding of the Flying Pig. They're getting ready for the Queen Bee as well this, I think it's come up this week. But got a chance to give them a tour of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And it was just exciting to hear their ideas as well. And they were very impressed, so was happy to have that tour. As, at a minute, there will be, Mr. Aludo will talk about something that is very historic in terms of the Regional Safety Complex. And he'll be talking more about what we're going to do. But right now, the time is going to be Friday, October 25th, a groundbreaking shovel-in-the-ground, 2:30 p.m. at Colrain Township, 9,500 East Miami River Road in Colrain Township. In addition, 513 Relief Bus today is in Norwood from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at University Station. So people can go there now. They will be in the West Stand at CMHA on Friday, October 4th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, people can go to 513relief.org and find out where they are. I want to remind everyone that the last day to register to vote is Monday, October 7th, and early voting begins October 8th. But there is a new law in the state of Ohio called the Voter ID Law. And there has been 158,000 people purged with 17,000 just right here in Hamilton County. We have gotten a lot of calls from people who have never missed an election, but they double-checked and saw that they had been purged. I'm talking people that's 80 years old, one gentleman 92 years old. So please, you have from now until October the 7th. In the morning, you got to get it quick. To double-check, you can go to our Hamilton County Board of Elections website. It's one of the best websites to navigate. You go to voter registration, type your name in, and make sure the name on your license is exactly the name that you're registered under. If not, you can register to vote and change it. So those are very important, because you can only use a driver's license from the state of Ohio. It has to be current. Can't say you had a birthday and you forgot to renew it. They won't allow it. Or you can have a passport that is current. Or you can have an Ohio ID, but you must get it from the BNV. And I understand those are free. Or you have to have a U.S. Military ID. Nothing else will be accepted. Can't go and give you a Duke Energy Bill. Nobody wants the Duke Energy Bill anymore, including yourself probably. But you can't utilize birth certificates, those kind of things. So please, I don't want anybody to be turned away. So that is what I have for my announcements. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. No by leave items today. Did just want to mention a couple of things, really just one thing, as I guess what I would call a good news item. But as we know, we got a presentation from Director Nick Crossley on the styrene leak last week. And as EMA was resolving that issue or carrying on with the assessment and the overall management of that issue, life in the emergency communications, emergency management world doesn't stop. And right about that time, we also had the remnants of Hurricane Helene start to come through the region. And especially as we see some impacts from climate change, et cetera, the impacts of hurricanes coming in to the U.S. are having more extensive impacts further inland. We didn't see anything like North Carolina saw, et cetera. But we did see a lot of high winds, a lot of heavy rain. That, so I really wanted to thank Nick and EMA for continuing to monitor those types of things, making sure communities are well aware of what's going on, while at the same time, they were continuing to manage the styrene leak from an emergency management response perspective. And also, just as Nick was managing his shop, we also had calls being taken by the 911 Center for the styrene leak. And then as the hurricane remnants began to move through, the calls at the 911 Center dramatically increased. So the stats that I know that Andy has provided through Holly show that over a three-hour period on the 27th, they handled almost 1,000 calls at the 911 Center, which is probably five to six times what they normally do. They had 22 call takers log in to handle that volume. I'm not aware of any calls that ultimately were complaints that came to me or to board offices. So I really wanted to thank Nick and his team for handling that work with such professionalism and making sure that the residents of this county stay safe during the most trying of times. So while we don't like to see those types of heavy weather incidents come through, we know that the folks at EMA and 911 do a great job on behalf of the county. So while it was not a positive event, it was a very positive and good news response. So just wanted to pass it on to the Board.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the hard work. We also have a public hearing tonight. We want to acknowledge that.
We do, yeah, Commissioners. We have a public hearing at 6 o'clock out in Madeira related to the Kenwood Hills Sewer Assessment Project. So MSD will be giving a presentation along with Public Health on that sewer petition project. And we expect to hear comments from the public at that hearing as well. That begins at 6 o'clock at the, in the City, at the City of Madeira Municipal Building, I believe.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, Item Number 1 is a major item, major piece of history. And I know a lot of people are watching that are out at the Lincoln Heights area. And we see Celeste is here, who was involved with the Heights Movement. And there were so many people, because when you're talking about an issue that's been 70 years old, 70 years, I mean, a lot of people tried. A lot of people tried to get it moving and grooving. A lot of people put a lot of work into it. And one of the things I'm excited about to have it on the agenda. I know Mr. Aludo has a presentation. And I guess I'll let you have the presentation. I want to open it up for each of our colleagues or something that we're getting ready to do this. It's incredible. Mr. Aludo, would you like to?
Absolutely, Commissioners, and thank you for the opening comments, Commissioner. Just some brief overview comments before I turn it over to the Board. As the Board is well aware, and as you've indicated, for the past several years, this has been one of the top priorities for this Board of County Commissioners to co-locate the firing range of the Cincinnati Police Department with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office firing range into a joint regional safety complex. The project, again, would relocate the existing Cincinnati Police Department firing range, which is located in Evendale, which has proximity to Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn, to the sheriff's facility in Colrain Township on East Miami River Road. Given the extraordinary and extensive history of the social and noise impacts of this facility to the surrounding communities, this has been one of the top priorities of the Board throughout the year, also as it's come into budget processes. So today, we have the first construction contract associated with this project for Board consideration. This is in agreement with Monarch. This is Item Number 1. It's the only item on your regular agenda today, Commissioners. This is Item Number 1. This is in agreement with Monarch Construction for what we call Phase 1 of this project. This is a, Phase 1 is a tremendous earth movement project that involves grading and earth movement to allow ultimately for Phase 2 to occur, which is the construction of the buildings and the range itself. But this allows for the earth movement and grading and the creation of temporary facilities for the sheriff, so that the broader construction project can move forward without any negative impact to the sheriff's office. The, through competitive bidding, this project, Phase 1, was bid out, came in at 11.8 million. That is below the engineer's estimate. It also contains 10.9% MBE utilization, 5.4% WBE utilization, and 16.4% SBE utilization. I do have a brief presentation. I'm just going to walk through. I just, just so that members of the public who are watching can see some of this. This is nothing that's new to the Board, but given, as you mentioned, Commissioners, the historic nature of this, just wanted to make sure that we paid its fair due during the tee-up for this. This is the existing Colrain site. This is the existing gun range for the sheriff out on East Miami River Road. Another picture of it from a little bit higher level. This is what we are going to. So this is, and I want to, I'll get to a list of partners here in just a second. Commissioners, you mentioned several of them. But we are going from a situation where we have two separate ranges operated by the two largest public safety entities in this county to what I believe will be heralded as one of the best examples of shared services that we've seen this region do in a long time. That is the creation of a regional safety complex that will be not only the co-location of firearms training, but their Phase 2 will also include the possibility for K-9 training, for driver, public safety driver training. And not just for Cincinnati Police and Hamilton County, but for regional public safety entities all throughout this community. The overall budget, and the Board knows this well, because it was, it took a long time to compile through multiple partners. But the sources of funding include County ARPA funding, County General Fund, the City of Cincinnati, federal funding through the federally congressionally-directed spending process, as well as an allocation from the state of Ohio to fund this, the first phase of this project. A lot of partners played a role in this. The City of Cincinnati, Cincinnati Police Department, Colrain Township, Evendale, Great Parks, Hamilton County Engineer, the Heights Movement, Lincoln Heights, Woodlawn, the Sheriff's Office, U.S. Senator Sherrod Brown's office, the state of Ohio. Lots of people helped deliver this and to make this possible. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more than what we normally do when we go through a regular agenda item, just because I know the historic nature of this for the Board, for the community, and how much emphasis and effort this particular commission has put into making this happen. I do want to mention that we have Bert Watts, our interim Director of County Facilities, here today. We have Anson Turley. Anson has been leading the, what I'll call, the intergovernmental relations side of this. So if there are questions regarding the project itself, Bert is here to help answer those. Anson can help with some broader aspects of the project as it relates to its partnerships as we move forward. We also have Jill Williams here from Purchasing, who oversaw the procurement process as well. So I want to thank all of them for their efforts. Thank the Board for their leadership and guidance on this. Happy to answer any questions. And as I said, we have the technical experts here who can answer project-specific questions as we move forward as well. So with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you for the presentation. Vice President Treehouse, I'll open it up.
Thank you. Thank you. As has been mentioned, I too view this as a historic occasion for the County Commission. We've been working on this for years, trying to move this gun range out of Lincoln Heights. And, you know, with the, some of the original contacts with the city, it's been a number of years ago, there was not a lot of interest in engaging in this. They were happy where they were, didn't really understand the impact to Lincoln Heights, Woodlawn, and Evendale necessarily. And so it took some convincing to get the city on board. But I will say that there are champions that, over at the City of Jamichelle Kearney in particular, who said, "We need to do this." The mayor, of course, was also engaged. And we had a hearing over at City Hall, it's been a number of years ago now, to make sure that council understood the impact of what we were talking about to the community of Lincoln Heights. And the Heights Movement had a lot to do with that presentation. So here we are now, many, many, many meetings later, trying to figure out how to make sure we had a regional safety complex in an appropriate location and had the money to do it. And the financial stack was no joke. I mean, it was, and Jeff just displayed it, how many entities had to participate to make this work. And so I do think it bears repeating with, by way of partnership, all of the partners in this project to get us to this point, which is really the first thing that we're doing here, to move the dirt, as Jeff says, to get this thing ready. So Lincoln Heights, the community of Woodlawn, and Evendale were all at the table early on, making sure this project went forward, along with the Heights Movement out in the Lincoln Heights area. Colrain was also very key to this. We had a public hearing in Colrain to make sure that the Colrain community knew what was going on. The facility location is so different than the location in Evendale, near Lincoln Heights, that it is an appropriate place. The sheriff's already out there. And it is in a much more rural area. And we are improving the site, and I don't want it to get lost, that we have a facility out there now that the sheriff uses. But with the new facility, we're going to have acoustic tiles, and we're going to capture the lead that's shot into the earth. And there are many, many things to make it more environmentally friendly and also quieter. And so there is a benefit to the individuals that live in that community. None of them live terribly close to it. But even if they did, it'll be an improved facility for them in that community. And then there are all these other jurisdictions that use that gun range that will benefit from this location as well. So the sheriff, obviously, was a huge partner and open to the idea that we do this consolidation, along with CPD, who also partnered in this. Sherrod Brown's office helped get meetings together and keep us all on the same page. The state of Ohio was in. Cindy Abrams, in particular, and Bill Blessing were very helpful in the financial stack there. And then, of course, the engineer's office, because we're using some of the land that the engineer has over in Colrain Township. And he was more than gracious to say, yes, I understand this is an important project, and yes, we will do what we can to make that land available. So it is a good moment. I know we're going to have a groundbreaking out at the location to celebrate with all of the partners. But I'm really proud of the work this Board did. We all had a part in this. We all heavily support this project. We all put money towards it. And so I am really proud of the work that we were able to do. As you say, it's been a long time coming, but here we are. And a reason to celebrate that we are doing something really historic for the community of Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn and Evendale. And never mind the last piece of it, which is what happens to that land once CPD gets off of it. And I know Evendale and Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn are working on how to best utilize that property. So many, many wins in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. A great day in Hamilton County. When I left Lincoln Heights as the village manager in 2015, one of the top priorities for me, if I became Commissioner, was to make sure that we closed the gun range. And we're moving toward that. This is a great day, for sure. I do have to comment about the partners that Jeff has on here, and they were all involved. But I'm just a little disturbed about how people came to the table who had the ability to give financially and did not give. And I know, in my mind, and every, that there were some people that could have given something and gave nothing. But I knew that they would be on here as a partner, because they came to meetings at the table. And so I think that's unfortunate, which ended up with the Board having to give more, which we wanted to, and then the state gave more. But I just knew that people would take credit for being partners, for coming to a meeting when they had money in their hands that they could have given us, and they didn't. So they'll have to deal with that. When I first came in '19, if you run the tape back, you will hear me on there every week. And I was telling everybody, "You're going to be tired of me saying this." But Lincoln Heights, I brought it up every time we had a legislative meeting. And that was so. We did not forget what was so important in Lincoln Heights, and we did not forget. And I thank my Chief of Staff, Bishop Hilton, who I put him on it right away to formulate a committee to get us going in this effort. a committee to get us going in this effort. So the other thing I'd like to say is, what would make me even happier than today in the groundbreaking would be closing the facility in Lincoln Heights. We need to close it as quickly as possible. I know there, it will take, what, Jeff, how long? What, a year? About a year to build this facility?
So we, the current plan is to break ground on Phase One, and then to bid Phase Two early next year. So the facility itself will probably be operational Q2 of 2026.
Okay. Very good. And as soon as we're able to get out of the other area in Lincoln Heights, we need to do that. I also had brought up the fact, let's stop calling it Lincoln Heights Gun Range. We don't want to take ownership for that. It's the gun range. It doesn't belong to Lincoln Heights, but it's very detrimental to Lincoln Heights. And we did stop doing that. And also, I recommended that we name it the Hamilton County Safety Complex, because we've won, we are the ones who have started the process and also given the most money. So I'm happy about that. So it couldn't be a better day. And I'm just wondering, where are the cameras? Because I know they're sitting in the office somewhere, listening, the reporters, but this is monumental as it relates to a community and a neighborhood and what we're doing and the health factors that have gone on because of that gun range. So I'm sure they write something, but they need to be here. This is just as important as Paycor or anything else. So I believe that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just first want to say to our administrator, as we're doing bidding and those kind of things, I want to move on the fast track, and I'm going to continue to push, because I've seen things that move quick, and I've seen things that don't move quick. And I was not as happy with Odell Owens' building naming that took two years, and Paycor letters went up in 48 hours. So I just want to be on record as saying, we want to push this to move as quick as possible. We've waited long enough. Seventy years, I think, is a pretty patient community to be moving forward. So I would like to be on record that we would like for this to be moving at the fastest pace possible. The biggest issue was, we didn't have the money. And we want to move quick because we know with inflation, everything, the projects start going up, materials pricing, et cetera. But I am very happy today that we're going to vote, and we have a groundbreaking that says that we're going to definitely take some action. I do want to thank all the folks, and we really can't thank everybody because it's been 70 years. I'm sure there's folks that have gone on to glory, who was also trying to get this Cincinnati Gun Range closed down that is located in Evendale. However, the sound of the shots ring into Lincoln Heights, very, sounds very close in that area, and also goes to Woodlawn. I want to thank some of the partners. This is not everyone. We're going to have an event, and there'll be a list, but some of the partners, obviously, we do thank the City of Cincinnati with Vice Mayor Jan-Michel, who kind of took the lead in that, in that area. Evendale, that showed up as supportive. But of course, Lincoln Heights, who has had to bear the burden and kind of help lead this, to keep it on the table. The Heights Movement, that took it to a higher ground and kept it on the table. I want to also acknowledge Woodlawn, the Mayor of Woodlawn as well, and the former Mayor of Woodlawn, who has gone on to glory, but was supportive of trying to get this out of here. Colrain Township, I was at the town meeting to hear, because we're not trying to move one thing to another community, but the difference is, the way the Cincinnati facility is built, it doesn't have the latest technology. It doesn't have what's available now, where you don't have the lead, you don't have the sound issues. So this will be state-of-the-art, that will not have those same issues that we are faced with the one that's located in Evendale and faces the Lincoln Heights area. The one in Lincoln Heights, I said, "I'm looking for, where are my environmental justice?" Not just African-Americans, but environmental justice. We just had last week talk about the green and all of that. We needed to all stand firm on this issue. This, if you want an example, this was the example. In addition to that, of course, the Sheriff, and CPD, and Chief of Police, and Engineer, and Administrators. And I want to recognize Tom Burton, the former Superintendent of Princeton High School. He kept on this thing. He wanted to get this thing done before he retired. He went out to other communities. He said, "Hey, this is not, this needs, everybody should be concerned, no matter what your race is." And I would hear him on conservative talk radio, as well as black radio. And he was determined, because we're talking about the eardrums and the safety of little black boys and little black girls who deserve an equal chance. They can't, they didn't have any choice. They had to hear this every day. So for me, this Board, this Board, this is a $31.6 million project. And after 70 years, and this Board's been around for, not our Board, but there's been Boards for 234 years, and none of them did it. 234 years divide, takes 70, 70 years worth, they didn't do anything on this issue. So we can't say, "Well, this was always on the table." This wasn't always on the table. And then the Board to say, "Wait a minute, we're going to put up over 50% of the money." Now, we got ARPA next to it, and I appreciate that, Mr. Ludo. But the ARPA money, we had to make a decision where the ARPA money goes. So the Board, Hamilton County Board, has put up $20,350,000. We can always talk about, we've been talking about it for 70 years. We've been talking, we've been marching, we've been pleading, we've been, but you had to have somebody to say, "We're going to put up the 20." It was a gap, and it was a $20 million gap out of $31.6 million. And then, of course, we were happy to have our other partners to help as well. We're very happy about that. But this is nothing to sneeze at. So today, we've had a lot of, like you said, meetings and discussions and all, everybody, but now, we were able to do that. And let me just say, it hasn't been easy. All of us have been involved in some meeting, somewhere, somehow, even to the point where we had the money, and I said, "Man, we didn't answer the questions." And then they came back and said, "No, the EPA," and they said, "They can't come out this time, and they need more time, and we can't reach them, and they're not available, and they've got to have so many weeks." And I remember, Anson would tell you, "We had a meeting with Senator Brown's new Chief of Staff." I said, "I don't want to hear nothing except call that EPA. And if they're not willing to move quick on this, then they need to be out at the current facility, because I know that doesn't meet the EPA requirements." And we got the EPA to, because sometimes these things work so slow. But I'm just saying, our Board has been feet to the fire, feet to the fire. And at my state of the county, I said, "We got to put a shovel in the ground." So I'm just, I'm almost in tears, but I can imagine the people who started the fight, who are not here to even see that it actually happens. I hope they're looking down on us and knowing that we didn't stop. So on October 25th, that's a Friday, at 2:30 PM, once we vote on this, and judging from my colleagues, I think we are unanimously, we're happy about that. In fact, I want to hit the gavel with this, like, "Meeting adjourned," because this is the biggest thing ever that we've been able to do. And I just want people to know, we're talking 70 years, people have been waiting. So Friday, October 25th, 2:30 PM, we will be putting some hard hats on, and we'll have some shovels, and we'll begin this process of finally closing that gap for 70 years. And I think that's one of the biggest environmental things we can do as a Board. So very excited about it. Make sure that we have it up on our website. Nobody left behind. Nobody said, "I didn't get invited. I'm inviting you now." Spread the word. We're all inviting you to be a part of this positive thing. So with that, Mr., oh, I was going to bring you to a vote, but go ahead.
I know, and I apologize, but it's in my throat, and I have to say it. Especially when you looked at the $31.6 million, and that's awesome. But really, what really gets me, and I have to say it, is Evendale, and they gave no money, even though they're a great partner and came to the meetings. And I'm going to call them out, Evendale, because they are going to financially benefit from that area when we close that gun range. They have a huge plan, Arrow Hood Plan, to build over there, and what they're going to make from there. And I mean, it's not out publicly, but I know about it. And I'm just saying, Evendale has the ability to give a dollar. I mean, they're not even on here for a dollar, and it's in their, it's in their plot, it's in Evendale, but it faces Lincoln Heights. And I just had, it just does not feel right when we say partners, they came to the table, because I didn't mention who it was, but I could not end this without saying, I really have a problem with them not contributing any money when I know they have it, and I know they're going to benefit financially from that area closing. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I make a motion, I proudly make a motion, to adopt item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Absolutely.
Don't forget, Friday, October 25th, 2:30 PM. Okay, Mr. Ludo, we're going to go to the consent agenda?
Commissioners, consent agenda, start with number two on your agenda. First is a resolution, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you want to do the appointment?
Oh, yes, I'll do the appointment. Item number two is appointment to one member to the River City Facilities Governing Board. I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Dumas?
No comments.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item, starting with item number three. Item number three is a budget adjustment. This is appropriating $5.27 million into the county's budget. The largest of this by far is $5 million. This is the appropriation of the county's federal entitlement grants through Community Development for 2024, Community Development Block Grant, Home Grant, and Emergency Solutions Grant. Item number four is a credit card fee in the Emergency Management Agency for $75. Item number five is an item authorizing invitation to bid for countywide paper with five different vendors at a total of $100,000. Item number six is authorizing the award of ITB 056-24. This is for the third phase of the Speaker Replacement Project at Great American Ballpark, Item seven is a rejection of an invitation to bid. This relates to technology upgrades in the Court of Common Pleas. This will be rebid, however, the bids came in more than 20% over the engineer's estimate, so it has to be rebid by, under Ohio law. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the use of credit cards in Job and Family Services at an annual amount of $36,000. Nine is a renewal of an original agreement with Cincinnati Children's Hospital for Residential Treatment Services at the College Hill Campus for $1.5 million. Item number 10 is authorizing renewal of an agreement with, this is through Hamilton County Job and Family Services. This is Juvenile Court for Medical Cost Reimbursement. In Juvenile Court, this is for children who are in placement through Juvenile Court. Item number 11 is a renewal of a single-source agreement with Lakeland Hospital Acquisition. This is for Residential Treatment Services, $180,000. Item number 12 is renewal number three, renewal number three of an agreement with Habilitation Center LLC for Residential Treatment Services, $200,000. Item 13 is renewal number three of an agreement with Piney Ridge Treatment Center for Residential Treatment Services for $75,000. Item 14 is an agreement with Talbert House for Residential Treatment Services, $300,000. Item 15 is renewal number three with Rolling Hills Hospital for Residential Treatment Services, $400,000. Item 16 is renewal number two of an agreement with Legal Aid Society. This relates to the Kids in School Rule Program through Job and Family Services for $1.648 million. Item number seven is renewal number three with BHC Fox Run Hospital for Residential Treatment Services, $975,000. And item number 18 is an agreement with University of Kentucky for Data Analytics and Support for Job and Family Services, and that is on for, is a no-cost agreement. Happy to answer any questions, Commissioners. That is your consent agenda for today.
Okay, I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Item eight, I was wondering about the $36,000 commercial, Fifth Third Card for Job and Family Services. Who's using that? Is that department heads, caseworkers?
I think Laura Wolf is on. Laura, would you like to provide some detail on the use of the credit card under item number eight?
John.
Oh, John Nelson is here. John, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Dumas, that is basically, we have one credit card at the agency, and it's under Director Michael Patton's name. And the purpose of the credit card is for emergency. When a caseworker has an emergency where we need to take care of a family in children's services, then they can directly email Director Patton. Director Patton would authorize such an expense. So it is very limited to children's services use only, and that is a maximum of $36,000 for the entire year.
Okay. That helps. I didn't know if there were like 10 of them going around.
No, ma'am. Just one.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve items three through 18.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.